And this is gavel to gavel, WCVW TV's complete coverage of the Richmond City Council. And good evening once again, I'm Dick Harmon. Welcome to our second meeting of the month of January, second meeting of our newly constituted Richmond City Council with three new council members, new council president. And what kind of a night have we got in store? Well, we have got 53 items on the agenda. However, where that breaks down is 16 items on consent agenda, 33 appointments and reappointments, 14 appointments, 19 reappointments, and four items on the regular agenda. That makes up the 53 items. So it's not going to be what we thought it was going to be. It's not going through 53 different pieces of legislation. The amendments or the appointments and reappointments are voted on in a block and they're at the very beginning of the meeting. So let's check out the agenda and we'll see what we've got tonight, what we don't have tonight. And we'll start off with item number one, which is ordinance 2012-141. And this adds new sections for the city code. It's a new section for establishing a derelict building abatement program. And that one's going to be continued until the 25th of February. Item number two, ordinance 2012-192. And that's a business license incentive program for qualifying businesses for the purpose of exempting new businesses that locate within the city from paying business professional occupational license taxes for a period not to exceed two years. That is going to be amended and continued until our next meeting, which will be on February 11th. Item three, ordinance 2012-200, special use permit for 407 South Cherry Street for the purpose of permitting multifamily use and the property at 811 Albemarle Street for establishing a single-family dwelling lot and a lot to use for surface parking. That one stays on consent agenda. Item number four, ordinance 2012-212. This is the all-way stop signs and all-way flashing red lights at the intersection of North Nansman Street and Kensington Avenue. That's been continued until February 25th. Item five, ordinance 2012-226. And this is basically what this is going to do, it's establishing regulations for the keeping, placement, and maintenance of chickens and other poultry in the city. But that's been continued until the 25th of February. Item number six is ordinance 2012-231. And that establishes an affordable housing trust fund advisory board. And that stays on the consent agenda. Item seven, ordinance 2012-232, amend and reordain chapters. This makes it unlawful for any person to attach a bicycle, motorcycle, or moped to a city-owned tree. And it concerns the impoundment of bicycles for the purpose of authorizing police officers to impound bicycles, mopeds, or motorcycles which for a period of more than 72 consecutive hours have been attached to city-owned trees, post signs, or other property owned by the city. That's going to be continued until March 11th. Item number eight, and this authorizes the CAO to execute a lease between Katab Ventures as Liso of the City of Richmond as Lisi for the purpose of, what this is doing is providing a temporary site for the East End Library at 3,001 9 Mile Road, Unit C for a period of six months. And that's being amended and continued until February 11th. Item number nine, and this authorizes the CAO to accept $25,000 from the Virginia Department of Conservation and Recreation and to appropriate the increase to the Stormwater Utility Budget. That stays on consent agenda. Item 10, ordinance 2013-7. And this authorizes the CAO to accept $6,350,000 from VDOT and to appropriate the increase to the fiscal year capital budget. And that stays on consent agenda. Item 11, Resolution 2012-R153, to declare a public necessity to amend the city code, initiate an amendment to the city zoning ordinance to exclude the raising or keeping of roosters as permitted accessory uses. Well, that one's going to be continued until the 25th of February. Item number 12, approving the plan of financing for the Capital Region Airport Commission for the purpose of financing or refinancing expansions, improvements, extensions. That will stay on consent agenda. Okay. Item 13 is expenditure approval for $250 from the council district funds for the sixth district for donation to Camp Divas Date With Dad Dinner and Dance on March 17th. Item 14, an expenditure of the amount of $500 for the same purpose from the third district. Item number 15, approving expenditure of $1,590 from council district funds for the sixth district to pay the 5th Street Baptist Church for providing catering for the sixth district awards ceremony. And item 16, to improve an expenditure in the amount of $500 from the council district for the second district, another good donation for the Camp Divas Date With Dad Dinner and Dance on March 17th. Okay, that's the items on the consent agenda. Now, we've got a lot of appointments and reappointments, so rather than keep putting all them up on the board there, we're just going to run through them very quickly here. So here are what the appointments and reappointments are for tonight. Okay. Appointing Allison Bogdanovic, a member of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Advisory Board. Appointing Andrea Allman, a member of the Urban Design Committee. Appointing Angela Brown as a member of the Clean City Commission. Appointing Angie Haming as a member of the Advisory Board of Recreation and Parks and also as a member of the Clean City Commission. Now, item 22, appointing Brian Jackson, a member of the Audit Committee of the City of Richmond. That paper has been stricken. Item 23, appointing Carol Murray, a member of the Clean City Commission. Item 24, appointing Catherine Welsh, a member of the Clean City Commission. Item 25 has been withdrawn. That was appointing Gary Huff, a member of the Clean City Commission. So that paper will not be heard tonight. Item 26, appointing Gil Hansberger, a member of the Urban Design Committee. Item 27, appointing Jay Alexis Fisher Rizik, a member of the Capital Area Alcohol Safety Action Program. 28, appointing Johnny Allen, a member of the Central Virginia Waste Management Authority. 29 appoints Michelle Miller, a member of the Community Criminal Justices Board. Item 30, appointing Andrea Allman, a member of the Urban Forestry Commission. Item 31, reappointing Anne Gordon Greaver, a member of the Economic Development Authority. 32, reappoints Nelson Williams IV, a member of the Building Code Board of Appeals. Item 33, reappointing Carl Jackson, a member of the Personnel Board. Item 34, reappointing Charles Crenshaw Jr., a member of the Minority Business Enterprise and Emerging Small Business Advisory Board. Item 33, reappointing Clarence Jenkins, a member of the Community Criminal Justice Board. Item 36, reappointing James Snowa, a member of the Building Code Board of Appeals, General Division. Item 37, reappointing James Starkey III, a member of the Board of Directors of Lewis Ginder Botanical Gardens. Item 38 has been stricken. That was appointing, reappointing Joel Cochi, a member of the Urban Forest Commission. That paper has been stricken. Item 39, reappointing Lawanda Shaw Thrower, a member of the Personnel Board of the City of Richmond. Item 40, reappointing Lynn McAtter, a member of the City Planning Commission. Item 41, reappointing Lynn McAtter, a member of the Richmond Regional Planning District Commission. Item 42, appoints Jane Hotchkiss, a member of the Clean City Commission. Item 43, appointing Matthew Elms, a member of the Commission of Architectural Review. Item 44, reappointing Stacy Williams, a member of the Richmond Ambulance Authority. 45, reappointing Thomas Davis, a member of the Building Court of Appeals. 46, reappointing Tracy Jeter, a member of the Minority Business Enterprise and Emerging Small Business Advisory Board. 47, reappointing William LaFune, a member of the Building Court of Appeals. 48, appointing Ernesto Sampson, a member of the Local Community College Board for J. Sergeant Reynolds Community College. And 49, the last reappointment, Alma Moore, a member of the Richmond Behavioral Health Authority for a term commencing on January 1st. So those are the appointments and reappointments. Now, remember for an appointment, you must be present tonight to be approved. Reappointments, you do not have to be present. And those will be voted on in a block at the beginning of the meeting. Okay. Now, let's get back to what's on the regular agenda for tonight. On the regular agenda, we have item number 50. And this is to amend. Ordinance 97-3-41, adopting a process to be followed to ensure funding for the 1% for Art Program to be administered by the Public Art Commission and adopted by the Richmond Public Art Commission Review and Acceptance Policy of Gifts to Works of Art. This is going to be continued until the 25th of February. Now, this is the one that may take some time tonight. This is amendment 50, or item number 51, and the amendment is what's going to probably take the time. Ordinance 2012-188. And this is amending and reordaining for the purpose of imposing a moratorium on acceptance of applications from nonprofit organizations for exemption from real or tangible personal property taxation. And the amendment that's being proposed tonight would temporarily extend the deadline for the completion of the property tax exemption by Designation Committee's review of applications for tax exemption beyond the deadline originally set. And the amendment, this would add this up or extend this to March 21st. Now, there was, Councilman Hilbert is not in favor of the amendment. He would like to see the application, an input to the applications and the whole thing be done with. I'm oversimplifying that, so I won't say much more about it than let the regular council session explain that a little further. But if they vote the amendment down, then they will have to vote on the paper tonight. If they do vote for the amendment, then the paper will be continued until our meeting on February 25th. It got a little confusing in there, but hopefully once the meeting starts, you'll get a better picture of what it's all about. Item 52 is being continued. That's concerning disposition of revenues arising from lease or other use of former school properties. That's continued until the 25th of February. And our final item, item 53, Resolution 2013-R8. This is policy, the patron of a proposal that would result in the reduction of an existing revenue source must also identify an alternative revenue source to offset the proposed reduction. And also proposals that would result in the reduction of an existing revenue source must be introduced only during the city's annual budget process. So that's where it stands right now. Okay, we started off with 53 items. We started out with 16 on the consent agenda. Five are being continued. Two are being amended, continued. That leaves just nine items left on the consent agenda. We had 14 appointments. One has been stricken, one has been withdrawn, so that leaves just 12 items for appointments. Reappointments, we had 19 to start with. One's been stricken, so we're down to 18. So appointments and reappointments, there are 30 of those now. And as I say, they take place in the very beginning of the meeting. Then on the regular agenda, we started out with four items. Three are being continued. The one maybe, well, the amendment will be talked about. And if it is continued, then we'll have no items left on the regular agenda. If the amendment is approved and not approved, then they will be voting on that one particular paper concerning the exemptions for nonprofits from personal property taxes. So we may have, 39, we may have 40 items, but 30 of those, they said, are appointments and reappointments, and they'll be coming up at the very beginning of the meeting. Now, awards and presentations tonight. We have one presentation that will, a proclamation proclaiming February 2013 is Richmond Black History Month. There'll be no recipient of that, they'll be reading that proclamation. Then we'll have an award to Ms. Lynn Lancaster and Mr. Stephen Bergen. They are the Parking Operations Manager and the Parking Program Manager, Richmond Department of Public Works, for outstanding service on behalf of Richmond residents. And then an award to Catherine Alzop, first grade teacher, Richmond Public Schools at Ginder Park, Mary Scott Elementary School, for helping make our city an even better place to live, love, work, learn, play, visit, and raise a family. And then an award was presented on January 22nd to the Honorable Bruce W. Tyler, former councilman from the first district. For six years, a dedicated public service member of the Richmond City Council. So those are the awards and presentations, which also come early out of the meeting. Citizens' comment period, we have five people to speak. One will speak on concerns removing the dedication sign for Gerald Jackson Evans. Mr. Hatcher will be speaking tonight, he's scheduled, and Jody Strange to talk about support for the Richmond Police Department K-9 Unit. Michael Spencer to talk about hens. And Rosetta Toretta to speak in support of the Police Chief, Chief Norwood, in Richmond. So that's the way the meeting stacks up so far. Now, how long is it going to take? What will be discussed, what will be debated? That we'll just have to find out once we get started. But we're getting ready to start here, the pre-meeting or the informal meeting. Actually, we're done there in about an hour and a half. So possibly the longest part of this meeting tonight might be reading of the appointments and reappointments, but we'll find out once we get started. We're getting started in just a minute or two. I'm Dick Harmon, stay tuned.
Ladies and gentlemen, we're about to start the meeting. Very good. Ladies and gentlemen, since we have a forum of council members present and accounted for, I'd like to begin this city council meeting with a moment of silence before the invocation. This weekend, we lost one of the legal giants in Virginia history, Justice Carrico. He brought to the bench and to the practice of law dignity, scholarship, and a true way of behaving that can only be described as gentlemanly. His loss is not just a loss for the bar, but for the entire state of Virginia. Our sympathies go out to his family, and now I ask for a brief moment of silence in his Thank you all very much. At this point, I'd like to introduce Reverend Victor Torres of the New Life Outreach International in South Richmond on Turner Road to perform the invocation. After that, we will have the pledge of allegiance. Reverend Torres?
Father, we humbly come to you this evening, and we thank you for your grace and we thank you for your strength. We thank you, Father, for your guidance. As we stand here this evening, we're working this great council enrichment. Lord, we pray that you will give this council the guidance and the wisdom that we need, Lord, that this city needs, for God. Lord, that you will bless these men and women that lead us in making decisions that impact our city and impact the lives of so many people. We pray, Father, that you will guide them. Lord, that we will be that people that you will have us to be in the city, Lord, to protect our children and our young people, to make those decisions, Lord, that will make this city even a greater city than what it is today. We ask your blessing tonight in the name of Jesus. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Please be seated. Roll call, Mr. Clerk?
Mr. President, I believe all council members are present except for Ms. Robinson, who is out ill.
Thank you very much. At this point, the chamber emergency evacuation plan, please.
Now, we will have the council evacuation announcement. Upon activation of the emergency alarm signal, all persons should immediately exit the building. Please use the exits to the left or right front of the council chambers, or the east or west stairway outside the rear doors of the chamber. Do not use the elevators or the escalators. After exiting the building, proceed to the assembly area located in the parking lot, voted by Clay, 8th and 9th Streets. Citizens and employees should assist visually and hearing impaired visitors with exiting the building. Mr. President, I would also like to review the citizens' request to signing up, the rules for citizens signing up to speak during citizen comment period at this formal council meeting. Citizen comment period is an opportunity for persons to present comments and information to council not pertaining to any items on the meeting agenda for this evening. Persons wishing to address council during the citizen comment period are generally allowed three minutes to speak. Persons appearing before council are not allowed to campaign for public office, promote private business ventures, use language of a person of nature which insults or demeans any person, including comments directed at public officials or staff members that are not related to their official duties, or address questions, address or question staff members directly. All questions are to be directed to the president of council. Failure to adhere to the guidelines may result in speakers forfeiting any remaining time and further disciplinary actions as necessary, which could include barring from attendance at future meetings of the city council for a period up to six months.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Are there any actions on appointments or reappointments tonight?
We have a list of appointments and reappointments. Starting with item number 17, Resolution Number 2013-R13, to appoint Allison Bogdanovic as a member of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Advisory Board. Item number 18, Resolution Number 2013-R14, to appoint Andrea Allman as a member of the Urban Design Committee. Yes, will you please stand when I call your name? I'll start, I'll start over again. Item number 17, Resolution Number 2013-R13, to appoint Allison Bogdanovich. Thank you. As a member of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Advisory Board. Item number 18, Resolution Number 2013-R14, to appoint Andrea Allman as a member of the Urban Design Committee. Item number 19, Resolution Number 2013-R15, to appoint Angela Brown as a member of the City Clean, of the Clean City Commission. Item number 20, Resolution Number 2013-R16, to appoint Angie S. Hayman as a member of the Advisory Board of Recreation and Parks. Item number 21, Resolution Number 2013-R17, to appoint Angie S. Hayman as a member of the Clean City Commission. Item number 22, Resolution Number 2013-R18, has been stricken. Item number 23, Resolution Number 2013-R19, has been continued to Monday, February 11th. Item number 24, Resolution Number 2013-R20, to appoint Catherine M. Welch as a member of the Clean City Commission. Item number 25, Resolution Number 2013-R21, to appoint Gary Huff. And that paper has been withdrawn. Item number 26, Resolution Number 2013-R22, to appoint Giles Hansberger as a member of the Urban Design Committee. Item number 27, Resolution Number 2013-R23, to appoint Jay Alexis Fisher Rizk as a member of the Capital Area Alcohol Safety Action Program Policy Board. Item number 28, Resolution Number 2013-R14, to appoint Johnny Allen as a member of the Central Virginia Waste Management Authority. Item number 29, Resolution Number 2013-R25, to appoint Michelle Miller as a member of the Community Criminal Justice Board. And she will serve as the designee for the Richmond Circuit Court Judge. Item number 30, Resolution Number 2013-R26, to reappoint Andrea L. Allman as a member of the Urban Forestry Commission. Item number 31, Resolution Number 2013-R27, to reappoint Annie Gordon-Grever as a Director of the Economic Development Authority. Item number 32, Resolution Number 2013-R28, to reappoint C. Nelson Williams IV as a member of the Building Code Board of Appeals. Item number 33, Resolution Number 2013-R29, to reappoint Carl W. Jackson as a member of the Personnel Board. Item number 34, Resolution Number 2013-R30, to reappoint Charles L. Crenshaw Jr. as a member of the Minority Business Enterprise and Emerging Small Business Advisory Board. Item number 35, Resolution Number 2013-R31, to reappoint Clarence N. Jenkins Jr. as a member of the Community Criminal Justice Board to serve as Richmond Circuit Court Judge Representative. Item number 36, Resolution Number 2013-R32, to reappoint James Snowa as a member of the Building Code Board of Appeals. Item number 37, to reappoint James H. Starkey III as a member of the Board of Directors of Lewis Ginder Botanical Garden, Inc. Item number 38, to Resolution Number 2013-R34, that paper has been stricken. Item number 39, Resolution Number 2013-R35, to reappoint Lawanda Shaw Thrower as a member of the Personnel Board of the City of Richmond. Item number 40, Resolution Number 2013-R36, to reappoint Lynn McAtter as a member of the City Planning Commission. Item number 41, to reappoint Lynn McAtter as a member of the Richmond Regional Planning District Commission. Item number 42, to reappoint M. Jane Hotchkiss as a member of the Clean City Commission. Item number 43, to reappoint Matthew D. Elms as a member of the Commission of Architectural Review. Item number 44, Resolution Number 2013-R40, to reappoint Stacy J. Williams as a member of the Richmond Ambulance Authority. Item number 45, Resolution Number 2013-R41, to reappoint Thomas K. Davis as a member of the Board, as a member of the Building Code Board of Appeals, General Division. Item number 46, to reappoint Tracy G. Jeter as a member of the Minority Business Enterprise and Emerging Small Business Advisory Board. Item number 47, Resolution Number 2013-R43, to reappoint Wim P. LaFune as a member of the Building Code Board of Appeals, General Division. Item number 48, Resolution Number 2013-R44, to reappoint Ernesto V., to appoint, rather, to appoint Ernesto V. Sampson as a member of the Local Community College Board for J. Sergeant Reynolds Community College. And item number 49, Resolution Number 2013-R45, to reappoint Alma M. Moore as a member of the Richmond Behavioral Health Authority. Those are tonight's appointments and reappointments.
Thank you very much. Are there any members of the public here tonight that would like to speak in opposition to any of these appointments? Are there any members of the public here tonight that would like to speak in favor of any of these appointments?
Good evening, President Samuels. My name is Silver Persing, I'm a citizen of Richmond, Virginia. I'm neither speaking in opposition or in support of any of the appointments or reappointments. I have a... I have a clarification question. It appeared to me as though two of the appointments did not stand. I don't know if they aren't present, but I would like a clarification on that. I don't, I didn't catch their names right off. I think they were located in the low twenties. As you all know, first time appointments are required to appear before the council in person, and that's not required for reappointments. I just wanted a clarification on if there were going to be any continuances on some of these appointments. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Persinger. Any other comments, one way or the other? Very good. Bring it back to council for discussion. Seeing none, would all those whose names were read tonight for initial appointments to a board or commission please stand? I want to thank each of you very much on behalf of council for your willingness to serve and for your service already to our communities. After the vote, would you please step outside to the clerk's office where the oath will be administered? Mr. Clerk? You may be seated. Thank you.
Yes. We are trying to verify if Catherine M. Welch is present. Thank you. And Ernesto Sampson? I believe you're here. Mr. President, those were the two that we weren't able to verify whether they were here.
Very good. Thank you, sir.
With that being said, do I hear a motion to accept the amended agenda as read?
I don't believe we need a motion for this. At this point, I believe you called the question, Mr. Clerk.
Okay. Calling, calling for a vote on tonight's appoint, on tonight's appointments and reappointment papers. We're voting on, call for vote right now at the council members. I'll call your name out, Mr. Blouse.
Aye.
Ms. Graciano?
Aye.
Ms. Mosby?
Aye.
And Madam Vice President Robertson is absent. Mr. Acosta?
Aye.
Mr. Hilbert?
Aye.
Ms. Trammell?
Aye.
Ms. Newbill?
Aye.
Mr. President?
Aye.
That paper has been adopted.
Thank you. If you all would mind stepping out to take the oath of office, we'd really appreciate it, and thank you again for your willingness to serve your communities. Awards and presentations?
Okay. We have four on the list tonight. First, we'll start with an official joint proclamation for the, to proclaim February 2013 as Richmond Black History Month, and that will be presented by Representative Mr. Mayor or representative and President Samuels. The Honorable Dwight C. Mayor, Dwight C. Jones, Mayor of the City of Richmond, and the Honorable Members of City Council, do hereby unite in solidarity and common purpose to recognize that since 1986... Okay, I'll start over. This is an award to recognize February as Richmond Black History Month. The Honorable Dwight C. Jones, Mayor of Richmond, and the Honorable Members of Richmond City Council, do hereby unite in solidarity and common purpose to recognize that since 1986, the month of February each year has been declared to be the National Black History Month in our nation, and whereas National Black History Month recognizes and celebrates the numerous and significant contributions that African Americans have made in the United States of America throughout our nation's history, and whereas the history of the world has shown that continued human progress and the success of society and civilization has been built on the foundation of inclusiveness and diversity of social and racial identity, and whereas embracing and celebrating our individual and communal racial and cultural identities and commonalities as Americans help to further bring everyone together and to drive the development of our society. Now, therefore, in order to officially recognize, honor, and celebrate the important history of African Americans in the United States of America, and in recognition of February 2013 as National Black History Month, Mayor Dwight C. Jones and the Members of Richmond City Council do hereby proclaim February 2013 as Richmond Black History Month, and call this observance to the attention of all residents, and ask them to join in the commemoration of this important month.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. In deciding what to do or to whom to award this joint proclamation, we realized that no one group, it would be impossible to award it to any one group, and so we've decided instead to honor all the groups who have dedicated their time and effort into preserving African American history and working for a better tomorrow. Thank you all very much. Mr. Clerk, the next award.
The next award is a public service award, and that award is going to Ms. Lynn Lancaster, and is presented by President Samuels. The Honorable Members of Richmond City Council do hereby recognize, honor, and celebrate Ms. Lynn Lancaster, who is a Parking Operations Manager with the Richmond Department of Public Works, for her outstanding service on behalf of Richmond residents, especially for the members of the Gray Street Association and the West Avenue Improvement Association. Representing a sterling example of excellence in public service, Ms. Lancaster, Lynn Lancaster has earned a trust and a solid reputation from residents for constantly going above and beyond the call of duty and her responsibilities to help solve issues and address the changing needs unique to individual neighborhoods. Ms. Lancaster has been embraced to, for being a caring and genuine advocate and champion of the community, and is highly valued for her dynamic community leadership skills. Serving the needs of the Fan and Carver Parking Districts, Ms. Lancaster has also been successful in providing leadership on behalf of the implementation of the new Richmond Special Residential Parking District Clean Sweep Program that was established in the fall of 2012. Ms. Lynn Lancaster has proven her dedication to the support of the principles and the creed written into the founding documents of our great nation. Now, therefore, Richmond City Council does hereby officially recognize, honor, and celebrate Ms. Lynn Lancaster, Parking Operations Manager with the Richmond Department of Public Works, for her outstanding service on behalf of Richmond residents, and thank her for helping to make our city an even better place to live, work, and raise a family. Mr. President? And the next award will go to Mr. Stephen Burgen. The Honorable Members of Richmond City Council do hereby recognize, honor, and celebrate Mr. Stephen Burgen, Program, Parking Program Manager with the Richmond Department of Public Works, for his outstanding service on behalf of Richmond residents, especially for the members of the Gray Street Association and the West Avenue Improvement Association. Representing a sterling example of excellence in public service, Mr. Stephen Burgen has earned a trust and a solid reputation from residents for constantly going above and beyond the call of duty and his responsibility to help solve issues and address the changing needs unique to individual neighborhoods. Mr. Burgen has been embraced for being a caring and genuine advocate and champion of the community, and is highly regarded, highly valued for his expert technical knowledge. Serving the needs of the Fan and Carver Parking District, Mr. Burgen has also been successful in providing leadership on behalf of the implementation of the new Richmond Special Residential Parking District Clean Sweep Program that was established in the fall of 2012. Now, therefore, Richmond City Council does hereby officially recognize, honor, and celebrate Mr. Stevens Burgen, Parking Program Manager with Richmond Department of Public Works, for his outstanding service on behalf of Richmond residents, and thank him for helping to make our city an even better place to live, work, and raise a family.
What you see is two employees who have a desire for excellence every day, and what you see in the audience are the thankful residents of the communities they've impacted, whether it's literally just walking down the street, trying to make sure they could increase the number of parking spaces on West Grace, to working with the residents of West Avenue to fix some serious problems with parking there, to working with the Fan District Association, the Monument Avenue Preservation Society, the Museum District, Carver, to Ward, wherever you go in the second district, these two people, Lynn Lancaster and Steve Burgen, have affected the quality of life in a positive manner for those residents, and I want to thank them for the tireless effort they've put in, and the countless meetings and hours they've put in order to make sure that this Clean Sweep Program and the restricted parking programs remain a success. We have both the president of the Fan District Association, as well as West Gray Street Association, and members of the West Avenue Improvement Association, all here to express their thanks with a round of applause.
The reason I came up here, even though this is a council resolution, is it's not often that we get compliments from citizens in the way we get compliments for you. We got an email that's praising the work that you've done, and there are several things that are very difficult to do, one of which is dealing with parking spaces. You've been able to handle this very, very well. You've brought acclaim to the city as opposed to negative comments, and I know you've taken a lot of time away from your families, so I want to thank you. Catch right as opposed to wrong.
Mr. President, the next award goes to Ms. Catherine Zopp. And that award will be presented by Mr. Hilbert. The Honorable Members of Richmond City Council do hereby officially recognize, honor, and celebrate Ms. Catherine Zopp, first grade teacher for Richmond Public Schools, Ginner Park, Mary Scott Elementary School. Joining Richmond Public Schools in 2009, Ms. Catherine Zopp has distinguished herself as a professional educator and has earned a solid reputation for her outstanding success on behalf of our children. Highly qualified, Ms. Zopp earned her Bachelor of Arts in Psychology and Master's of Art in Teaching from James Madison University. As a testament to her dedication, Ms. Zopp earned the Richmond Public Schools, Ginner Park, Mary Scott Elementary School Teacher of the Year Award in 2011-2012, and was selected as the 2013 Richmond Public Schools Teacher of the Year. Now, therefore, Richmond City Council does hereby officially recognize, honor, and celebrate Ms. Catherine Zopp, first grade teacher for Richmond Public Schools, Ginner Park, Mary Scott Elementary School, and thank her for helping to make our city an even better place to live, work, and raise a family. Mr. Samuel? I mean, Mr. Hilbert?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Clerk and members of council, those gathered. It's with great pleasure that I want to recognize Mrs. Zopp for the work that you've done. In reading your story, it's so poignant of, no offense, Mr. President, but she was on her way to becoming a lawyer and decided that she wanted to do something else and get more involved, and that that made a real difference, that you wanted to be on the ground level, and so we've reaped the reward from that, that you pursued your passion. So, first of all, thank you for that. To create that positive structured environment for the children at Ginner Park and setting that example for your colleagues is really wonderful. To have that morning meeting time when you have that positive relationship and the child is greeted and welcomed to the school, those are all very important underpinnings of a successful system. So, I did want to, and council wants to recognize your efforts, thank you so much for what you do for our children of the city and how that helps future generations and gives the parents of our city some confidence that when they let go of their child's hand in the morning, that they'll return a better citizen. So, thank you very much. God bless you, and you're welcome to make any remarks that you would like.
Well, thank you for the recognition, and I mean, everything that you said is something that a lot of teachers do, so I'm very honored to have been recognized, and I look forward to representing all Richmond teachers over the next year. So, thank you.
Mr. President, those are all, those are all of the awards.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. At this point, we're going to have a presentation from the mayor's commission, or the mayor's Anti-Poverty Commission. This was a commission co-chaired by Vice President Robertson, who unfortunately is home ill tonight and couldn't be here today, but her leadership and dedication to this cause has done a wonderful amount of good, and we owe her a debt of gratitude for being willing to take on this additional work in addition to everything else that she has on her plate as a councilperson. So, I want to thank her, and I'm sorry that she can't be here today to hear that in person. But at this point, I'd invite the Anti-Poverty Commission members to come up and present.
There is more than one of us in the commission, but I'm only one here. I'm a, good evening again. I'm Thad Williamson, and I've been a member of this commission. I'm a resident of the fifth district, and it's with great pride that I had the opportunity to present this report on this really critical issue for the city's future. Also, also want to express my regret that Ellen is not here. It's been really wonderful working with her, and she has really played a key role in pushing this along to get to this point. Do we have the slides set up or not? While, while we're getting to that, I think I have the key recommendations memorized, so whether we get to her or not. You heard this afternoon the detailed blow-by-blow PowerPoint, so I won't walk through all that again. I'm just going to make some background comments about the importance of this report for the benefit of those, the public who may have been following the details of this, and then we'll go straight to the, to the major recommendations. When we've gone out into the community, the four dozen or so members of this commission over the past two years, we've seen a lot of hunger for the city to come up with a meaningful strategy to redress poverty. One quarter of our citizens live in poverty, two in five of our city's children. This is really a ticking time bomb for the city's future. But a major challenge of a commission like this is to specify where city government can make the most impact. The city government must work within the policy context set at the state and federal level. On the other hand, we also know the city government cannot do the everyday work that is the responsibility of everyday citizens, such as taking responsibility for our own lives, families, and communities, and loving and educating all our children. The city can and should encourage all these things, but those tasks necessarily fall primarily to the public at large, to the community. What city government can best do is focus on providing citizens with the best possible education and preparation for college or work, connect citizens to expanded employment opportunities via training programs, target economic development, and rapid functional transit, and also work to improve the safety, attractiveness, and overall quality of life of all our neighborhoods, including those in which many or most residents have low household incomes. It has not been the purpose of this commission to recommend Band-Aids or to settle for marginal steps and marginal improvements, nor is that what the community would be satisfied with. Rather, we've aimed to develop recommendations that could move the city to a significantly different place through both major structural improvements and through more strategic and coordinated use of the resources we already have. Our proposals are ambitious, but they are not pie in the sky. Rather, they reflect the desire to take our place as a modern 21st century city that shows respect to all by providing meaningful opportunity to all. That said, it's no trivial matter to confront the decades of history that have concentrated suffocating poverty in our city, and especially to do so in such a challenging fiscal and economic climate. But our citizens do not have the luxury of waiting for more favorable times to come along before we start making the changes needed to improve the quality of life in our low-income communities and extend the ladder of opportunity to all our residents. As Arthur Ashe put it, "We must begin where we are, use what we have, and do all we can." And these recommendations reflect this commission's desire to act on that wisdom. So, just for the sake of the public, we thought about two kinds of anti-poverty policies, those which directly reduce poverty... those which directly reduce poverty by increasing household incomes to lift folks over the poverty line, but also policies aimed at making poverty less debilitating through improving the quality of life, making communities safer, improving opportunities to children who are growing up in poverty. Because we know for the foreseeable future, lots of people will remain in poverty in Richmond as long as this poverty nationally will be disproportionately concentrated in city. That's a reality we have to confront. But when you look at the numbers, what's really striking is the degree to which poverty among adults is an issue of employment. And over 90% of working-age persons in Richmond who are classified as in poverty are not working full-time. And so, anti-poverty policy strategy, to be serious, to be not just Band-Aids, must confront this employment issue head-on. And there are really four overlapping problems here. One is simply lack of living wage employment opportunities. That is not just a job, but a job that puts you significantly above the poverty line and truly allows you to be self-sufficient. Second, issue of inadequate transit to the regional opportunities that do exist, access to the suburban job market in particular. Third, the skill mismatch between what employers want and the skills that people currently have are underemployed and unemployed folks. And fourth is the lack of preparation for successful employment among some city residents, especially young people who may have limited or zero work histories. Okay. And all told, if you add the numbers, we estimate between 10,000 and 15,000 residents who are unemployed and are likely to struggle to find steady, full-time work on their own due to a variety of factors, but principally the difficulty of finding quality jobs for those of the high school education or less. We also have a severe problem of youth unemployment and also a severe problem of folks who are underemployed, about another 15,000 or so who are working some of the time but are still in poverty. And really, the key to the poverty problem in the city is how can we increase employment among these groups? And that will lift those persons out of poverty, but also their children as well. So, the commission recommends a four-pronged strategy. First, bolstering workforce training that generates practical results, actually connects folks to jobs. Second, tying economic development strategy explicitly to anti-poverty priorities through targeted recruitment and development of key industries. Third, expanding access to the existing entry-level jobs in the region through a new regional rapid transit system. And fourth, long-term improvement in school system outcomes to better prepare our kids for work or for college. To go a little bit of detail about each of those, we recommend building on the success of the Richmond workforce pipeline over the last couple of years, which has put a significant number of persons into jobs. The idea there is to treat the business as a customer, ask them what they need, and then tailor training programs and workforce preparation programs to residents who are having significant challenges in finding employment. Over half who've been involved in this program so far have actually gotten a job. There's plenty of room to scale this initiative up in coming years, and if we're running hundreds of people through this a year over a 10-year period, that's a significant cumulative The Job Creation Committee identified key sectors likely to be promising industries in the future, not going to die or go away, but also have the kinds of jobs that would be both living wage and reachable by our citizens. And these include logistics, advanced manufacturing, health services, and call centers. Making the most of the port, developing to its full potential is also, needs to be a key part of the economic development strategy. And what's important here is not simply the, these jobs and the targeted industries, but also the spin-off effect, the multiplier effect, the new firms that arise up to meet the needs of those firms and their employers. And many of those jobs will be entry-level. Expanded transit access to regional jobs. Our labor market in the Richmond metropolitan area is needlessly segregated by the fact that most functional public transit stops at the city lines. And this puts us in the bottom 10% of large metropolitan areas nationally in overall transit accessibility. And this is a serious problem for Richmond residents, because 1 in 5 households don't have regular access to a car. So, this map here demonstrates the large numbers of entry-level jobs which are located beyond the transit service area of GRGC currently. And so, simply, the commission's proposal is to expand regional transit along the four major job corridors going through our community, and that being Broad Street, Hull Street, Midlothian Turnpike, and Route 1. And we estimate, if you do all these things, that's combined putting 128,000 jobs, over half of which would be relatively low-skill positions within reach of city residents. Doesn't mean they're job openings, it means they're jobs that will, over time, become available through, you know, normal turnover and that our residents can apply for. But this is not simply a poverty proposal. A regional rapid transit system needs to be conceived of as a public good that benefits residents of the counties and the cities, middle-class affluent folks, as well as those who need expanded access to jobs through transit. Okay. In terms of education, clearly critical, and clearly an issue we have to put a number of years on the table. We need to continue and advance and enhance our investments in early childhood initiatives. The commission's recommending pursuing development of a Richmond Promise-type scholarship that would allow those who've gone through the public school system, if you go through the whole ride, you would have full tuition for college. If you go through part of the way, you would be on a sliding scale. So we can legitimately say to young people, to many of our middle-school kids who are getting lost and don't believe there's a future for them, to be able to say that if you work at it, if you take school seriously, there is a future for you. There is an academic possibility for you. And in that way, begin to sort of jumpstart and ratchet up expectations and build a culture of academic success. At the same time, we need to greatly expand and make more effective our vocational training within the schools, extend that pipeline concept into the high school level. And finally, we also must make the best faith effort we can to reach those who dropped out of the system, who are not in school, who are not in the labor market, and whose life chances don't look particularly good. We need to address, though, that those are members of our community, and if we don't address that, it's going to have painful consequences for the next generation of kids growing up. The last major recommendation has to do essentially with housing and quality of life, and the gist of this is to pursue the redevelopment of the existing public housing communities with the commitment to no displacement, to resident participation, and to linking the redevelopment opportunities that would arise to expand economic opportunity for the residents of those communities. So, to sum it up, workforce development, recruiting the right kind of employers, regional rapid transit, educational pipeline, and public housing redevelopment without displacement. We also have a number of secondary recommendations that I went through this afternoon that I will not highlight right now, but I invite all listening to check these out in the report. I do want to mention the question of implementation and accountability. How do we make sure this piece of paper doesn't just stay a piece of paper, but has some tangible influence, having put this level of effort into the research and recommendations? We have requested that the mayor administration develop a strategic action plan to begin converting these recommendations into specific budgetary requests for both the top tier and the feasible second-tier recommendations by the middle of next month. We also recommend building the city's capacity to act on this issue through designating or appointing a senior staff position to coordinate the anti-poverty agenda across different policy domains. Third, clear communication across branches of the city hall and city government concerning poverty-related policies. Fourth, sharing this report with elected and public officials in the region and the Commonwealth, and also our federal elected officials, so that future conversations about regional cooperation, about federal funding opportunities, or state funding opportunities can be seen in light of the strategic plan that's been developed here. And finally, we are recommending creating a permanent, independent, ongoing citizen commission, roughly modeled on what the Human Relations Commission used to be in the city, to sure the city government keeps its eye on the ball. And that, we all know that there are many crises that come up, many things that have to respond to, the budget process is all-consuming, but we need the citizen voice in there to make sure that the operation of city government, both future councils and future mayors, continue to have power at the forefront. That's the only way we'll be able to make meaningful progress as the years go on. I want to thank you for your attention. I also want to say on behalf of the members of the commission that we would welcome dialogue with any or all of you, if you have questions, small or large, about the recommendations or the reasoning behind them. Thank you for your attention tonight.
Thank you very much, Professor Williamson. Again, we want to thank all the members of the commission, there was about 50, who dedicated a significant portion of the last year into making this report something that we can really sink our teeth into to address a incredibly significant problem, not just in our city, but in our region. Also want to refresh my thanks for Vice President Robertson. Without her leadership, who knows what would have happened here. We're thrilled that she was able to take the reins and make this into the great success that it was. We thank her again. At this point, Mr. Clerk, that would be the end of our awards and presentations?
Yes. Yes, Mr. President.
Wonderful. Unless there's an objection from council, I'd like to go a little out of order and call Paper 51 now, please.
Item number 51 is Ordinance Number 2012-188, to amend the City Code by adding a new section 98-249.1, for the purpose of imposing a moratorium on acceptance of applications from nonprofit organizations for exemption from real or tangible personal property taxation, and to temporarily extend the deadline for the completion of the property tax exemptions by designation committee's review of applications for tax exemptions by designation beyond the deadline set forth by the City Code, Section 98-248 as amended. The proposed amendment to that paper is as follows. Page 1, line 8, after the word designation, insert the phrase and the deadline by which ordinances exempting property from taxation must be introduced. Page 1, line 9, after the word "the," delete the word "deadline" and insert the word "deadlines." Page 2, line 15, after the word "to," delete the date "February 15" and insert the date "March 21." Page 2, line 20, after the section number 3, insert the phrase "that notwithstanding any provision of Section 98-248 of the City Code of the City of Richmond, 2004, as amended to the contrary, effective only for the tax year beginning January 1, 2013, the deadline for the council established pursuant to Section 98-248 of the Code of the City of Richmond, 2004, as amended. To introduce any ordinance exempting property from taxation by designation shall be extended from March 15, 2013 to April 8, 2013, and that for each tax year thereafter, the deadline for the council to introduce any ordinance exempting property from taxation by designation shall be as set forth in Section 98-248 of the Code of the City of Richmond, 2004, as amended until otherwise provided by law or ordinance." Page 3, line 5, at the beginning of the line, insert "Section 4." That's, those are the amendments, proposed amendments to that paper. Mr. President.
Thank you very much. At this point, I'm going to ask the Chair of the Finance Committee to give a brief introduction to the paper and to the amendments. Then I'm going to ask Mr. Hilbert to give a brief introduction to his issue, then we're going to have some public comments on this.
Thank you, Mr. Samuels. Mr. Samuels, as you know, this paper was introduced in September. The state mandates that certain organizations will not be exempt from real estate tax. It gives localities the opportunity to determine whether or not they also want to exempt other nonprofits from real estate tax. The City of Richmond, for about four or five years, had a moratorium that we would not exempt any nonprofits, other than those mandated from real estate tax. About a year ago, we decided to take another look at that, and we rescinded that and said that we would review applications from nonprofits, which we have done for about a year and a half. We feel that it's a very difficult process, that it's very difficult to be objective on it. It takes a very subjective judgment in terms of who should get this tax exemption and who should not. This paper was introduced, as I said, in September. I think what the amendments do tonight, the amendments tonight put off on, what the paper says, is that when this paper passes, that we will no longer accept applications for tax-exempt status. What this, what the amendment says is that we will put that off until February 15, and that is what the amendment says. So the amendment extends it for two weeks.
Thank you very much. Mr. Hilbert?
Thank you, Mr. President. When this issue was visited sometime last year, I can't recall the specific month of reopening or killing the moratorium that is starting to accept application for tax exemption, I voted against that, opening up the process. I felt like it was cumbersome and subject to who had the best lobbyist that was going to get the exemption versus other organizations that don't. I think that there's a tremendous number of organizations that do a lot of wonderful work in our city, and we appreciate that and want to support them. And I have supported numerous amendments to budgets to fund some of these organizations directly. However, I did have a problem of giving these tax exemptions in that it was confusing, it was cumbersome to the organization, it's definitely cumbersome to city staff to review these, it takes a lot of time to go through these applications, as well as for the city attorney's office to prepare applications. Certainly, the time invested in that is multiple times the effort to directly fund some of these organizations through the budget, either non-departmental's or other city-state-local, excuse me, city-state and federal dollars. So, I'm not against these organizations, I think they do great work, I just feel that it is problematic public policy to be doing it via tax exemption. And I'm asking my colleagues this evening to vote against this amendment and to pass this paper as it currently is, so that we can reinstitute this moratorium and go about evaluating organizations, direct funding, or some other method other than granting a tax exemption. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. President?
Yes, ma'am.
One thing I did forget to mention on this paper is that no more applications will be accepted if this paper is passed tonight. However, those applications already that have already been submitted will be reviewed.
Very good. Thank you. Now, Mr. Clerk, you and I are going to have to work together on this to make sure I keep things in the right order. I believe what we will need now is a motion from a council member so that we can have some public comment on the proposed amendments, and then we'll have the vote on the amendments.
That is correct. At present, though, we're discussing item number 51, Ordinance Number 2012-188. Do you want to vote on this particular paper first?
No, sir. What I believe we want to do, and I'm going to rely on your knowledge as our clerk, is we want to make sure that legally we give the public an opportunity to be heard on this, since we're doing it out of order. We also want to make sure that there's a motion on the floor about which they can And it could be that I'm missing something.
Okay. We've had council discussion. Now, do we want to have anyone from the public to come forward and speak in favor or against the paper?
Are there any of those members of the public here tonight that wish to speak in favor of the amendments? Are there any members of the public here tonight that wish to oppose the amendments?
My name's Silver Percy, and I'm a My name's Silver Persie, and I'm a citizen of Richmond, Virginia. I would like to encourage members of city council to support Mr. Hilbert and his request. The last time you granted these tax exemptions was September 10, and you granted exemptions to James River Apartments, two properties assessed at $720,000, for a total of $8,640 in annual relief. And these, when you grant an organization tax exempt status, this continues into the future, year after year. So this is a reoccurring cost to the city that is going to have to be made up by taxpayers, essentially, or it's lost revenue where the city doesn't have funds to do the work that is required. But, you know, Chestnut Hill Apartments was another organization, Find Incorporated, D-Find LLC, Boaz &amp; Ruth had nine properties, you tax-exempted Cherokee Hill of Richmond Incorporated, Bliley Manor Incorporated, one property assessed at $400,000. You know, what, what happened last time was you guys had a committee to recommend which ones to approve, and they recommended only approving one of the organizations for tax-exempt status. You guys, because you are heavily lobbied by these organizations, you approved something like 10 different organizations for tax-exempt status. I don't want to see that happen again. You guys already have, have organizations in the pipeline that has submitted their applications for tax-exempt status. I guess there's nothing you can do. It sounds like Mr. Hilbert's fine with those going ahead through the process, and I would like to encourage you guys to let the process work this time. Follow the recommendations of the, of the committee or this group that is established to make these recommendations and follow it. Don't, don't, don't heed to the pressure of these organizations that they put on you guys, because there's a process to follow, and the public's not served by you guys caving in to the demands, because nobody wants to pay taxes, whether you're a nonprofit organization or private individual, nobody wants to pay taxes, and you can't blame them for trying. But, so, please support Mr. Hilbert in his effort to forward. This paper was introduced in September, you know, the same month that you guys granted the things last time. Why is it, why is it just coming up now? It's January, it's been three or four months. Please, please follow Mr. Hilbert's desires. I support Mr. Hilbert. Thank you for the opportunity to comment.
Thank you, Mr. Silver. At this point, Mr. Clerk, I believe we'll have a vote on the proposed amendments?
I'll need a motion.
I'm sorry, there'll be council discussion on the proposed amendments. Seeing none, we'll have the vote on the proposed amendments, please.
Yes, I'll need a motion to accept the proposed amendment. Ms. Graziano, will you make that motion?
So moved.
Council is voting on Councilmember Graziano's motion to accept the proposed amendments to item number 51, ordinance number 2012-188, as presented, and that paper would be continued until Monday, February 11. Mr. Bilalz?
No.
Ms. Graziano?
No.
Ms. Mosby?
No.
Mr. Aguilasta?
No.
Mr. Hilbert?
No.
Ms. Trammell?
No.
Ms. Newbill?
No.
President Samuels?
No.
That motion has failed.
Thank you. Now, I believe the paper in its original form is before us.
Okay, Mr. President. Now, we will have the amendments to the consent agenda?
Well, sir, no. I'd like to continue with Paper 51 before we move on to other things.
Okay.
The motion for the amended, for that, for that particular amendment did not pass.
And therefore, I would like to move on to the actual Paper 51 in its pre-amended form, please.
Okay. Would you like for me to read the paper as it is, again?
Yes, please.
Okay. Item number 51 is ordinance number 2012-188, to amend the city code by adding a new section 98, I'm sorry, yes, adding a new section 98-249.1, for the purpose of imposing a moratorium on accepting, on acceptance of applications from nonprofit organizations for exemption from real or tangible personal property taxation, and to temporarily extend the deadline for the completion of the property tax exemption by designation committees review of applications for tax exemptions by designation beyond the deadline set forth in city code Section 98-248. Mr. Bilalz?
No.
Ms. Graziano?
Madam, madam clerk, I think because we're actually having the actual paper in front of us now, we have to have another round of public comment, as the first public comment section was just on the proposed amendments. So what I believe we need to do now is have all those in favor of this paper come forward, please, for public comment. Seeing none, any opposed, please come forward.
My name is Chris Dorsey. Thank you, President Samuels, for allowing the mandated public comment on the implementation and accountability. I'm just reading this right now, but I really think that there needs to be true accountability in this city and not just some sort of, you know, fake piece of legislation that's, that's put through at the last minute. You know, we can't really go through in, in three minutes all of the problems with the government, because it's pervasive throughout the government. There's, there's nothing, right, yeah, I'm speaking, I'm speaking to the paper, yeah, the implementation and accountability. My, my point is that there is going to be no implementation of accountability and that this is just a fraud. So I'm opposed to legislation that's put forward under false pretenses, that's why I'm speaking out against it, you know, I mean, and I'm in order, and I believe you were out of order there.
Well, Mr. Dorsey, I'm sorry for interrupting, I'll give you this time back, but this is from a previous presentation, not the paper that we're voting on.
Okay. All right. Well, you know, this goes for every piece of legislation that, that's gone through that I, I have, I have
Legislation, please, sir.
Right. This, is this different from the legislation that this body and the previous body, you being a member, have, have voted on?
Do you have any public comment about this?
Right. You know, again, you're, you're interrupting my time and you're saying you're going to give it back, but, but again, you're out of order. So I'm going to continue my opposition, as stated before, my opposition to this particular piece of legislation. I oppose everything this body does. So therefore, I can say what I want to, because I'm in opposition and I'm legally, it's my legal right to speak out against the government. So what I'm saying is, what I think this is, is it's fake. I think it's, I think it's a CYA maneuver. I don't think this body does anything else. You give us all this BS legislation, you know, and you give away all the city's assets to the Catholic Church or the Redskins, you know, with all these agreements, I'm saying accountability, you're talking about accountability. That's in, that's in the, that's in the, the bill, that's implementation and accountability. You, you're never accountable, this body is never accountable. It just moves on to the next piece of legislation where you jam up the people in order to line the pockets of the people who pull your strings. I'm opposed to everything, you know, this body does. And anything that pretends to be, you know, implementation of any sort of accountability, I think is an absolute fraud. That's it. I mean, so, I oppose it, I think everything this body does is a fraud, I think that evidence shows that, that every time the people oppose something, this body votes nearly unanimously, but most of the time unanimously for it, and then every time that, that something goes forward that the people oppose, there's nothing but problems and there's never any accountability. So I am done with the nonsense where you guys pretend like you're doing your job, but really all you do is jam up the people. That's it. Thank you.
Are there any other public comments in opposition to this specific piece of legislation? Upon seeing none, I'll bring it back to council. Is there discussion? Seeing, oh, I see discussion. Ms. Mosby?
I just want to make a comment in reference to this paper.
Thank you.
And informal, we spent a lot of time on this paper, trying to get understanding about this paper. We asked people to come down and give information about this paper, because we have a new body that's trying to figure out how to make good judgment on these papers. So I just want the people to know that, I don't know, I can't say what happened before, but I can say that the eight other people that I'm working with, today we worked hard trying to figure out a good solution for this paper. And it does seem like at one point, they opened a door, trying to open up something to say, let's open the door to see if we can help more people. And then they realized that they could not do that, and so now we're back again to discussing trying to help the people. So I am saying that I do believe that these eight other people that sit with me are trying to help the people the best that we can on this paper. Thank you, Mr. President.
Ms. Graziano, I thought that's all your hand raised. Now, any other comments? Seeing none, please call the question, Mr. Clerk.
Council is voting on item number 51, ordinance number 2012-188. Mr. Bilalz?
Yes.
Ms. Graziano?
Aye.
Ms. Mosby?
Aye.
Mr. Aguilasta?
Aye.
Mr. Hilbert?
Aye.
Ms. Trammell?
Aye.
Ms. Newbill?
Aye.
President Samuels?
Aye.
That paper has been adopted.
Thank you very much, madam clerk. At this point, barring no objection from council, we'll go back to the regularly scheduled programming of agenda review and other amendments.
Okay, Mr. President. Now, we'll have the amendments to the agenda. Starting with the consent agenda, item number one, ordinance number 2012-141, continue to February the 25, 2013. Item number two, ordinance number 2012-192, amend and continue to February the 11, 2013. Item number four, ordinance number 2012-212, continue to February, February the 25, 2019, 2013. Item number five, ordinance number 2012-226, continue to February the 25, 2013. Item number seven, ordinance number 2012-232, continue to March the 1, 2013. Item number eight, ordinance number 2013-1, amend and continue to February the 11, 2013. Item number 11, resolution number 2012-153, continue to February the 25, 2013. That completes the consent agenda. Moving on to the regular agenda, item number 50, ordinance number 2012-4, continue to February the 25, 2013. Item number 52, ordinance number 2012-223, continue to February the 25, 2013. And item number 53, resolution number 2013-R8, continue to February the 11, 2013. That completes the amended agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. In addition to those amendments, I believe we'd also need to amend the agenda as follows. Wouldn't we need to amend the agenda to reflect those papers, stricken or withdrawn, in the appointment section?
In the appointment and reappointment section, item number 22, resolution number 2013-R18, that paper has been stricken. Item number 23, resolution number 2013, resolute, R19, continue that paper until Monday, February the 11. Item number 25, resolution number 2013-R21, that paper has been withdrawn. Item number 38, resolution number 2013-R34, that paper has been stricken. And I believe that concludes all of the items on the amended agenda.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Please continue.
Okay. Do I hear a motion to accept the amended agenda as presented?
Excuse me, Mr. President.
Yes, sir, Mr. Attorney.
For clarification purposes, I may not have heard this correctly, but Paper Number Seven is to be continued until what day?
Mr. Clerk, will you ensure?
Paper Number Seven, item number, item number seven, ordinance number 2012-232, is continued until March the 11.
Wonderful.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Is there a motion from a council member to make these amendments?
So moved, madam. I'm sorry, Mr. Clerk?
Thank you.
Mr. President.
Okay, council is voting on tonight's agenda as presented. Mr. Bilalz?
Aye.
Ms. Graziano?
Aye.
Ms. Mosby?
Aye.
Mr. Arcalesto?
Aye.
Mr. Hilbert?
Aye.
Ms. Trammell?
Aye.
Ms. Newbill?
Aye.
President Samuels?
Aye.
The amended agenda is before you.
Wonderful. May we please take up, after the regular agenda, would be citizen comment?
Okay. The first speaker tonight is Marie Morton Hart. Will you please come forward?
My name is Marie Morton Hart. I am a South Cityan. I have lived in Southside for 74 years. I am here tonight to find out what happened to the signs that they gave Ms. Geraldine Evans, Geraldine Jackson Evans, which was my cousin. She was the mother of Blackwell. That's what the sign said. She and I, plus Ms. Trammell, worked a minute trash trucks and kept Blackwell clean. So the signs are gone. It was two of them, at 16th and Murray. Can someone tell me what happened to those signs?
Thank you very much. This is usually not a time where council members respond, I know that
Well, is anyone in here can tell?
Yes, there sure is. There's a lady in the back, Ms. Enitis, from the mayor's office, and I'm looking to see
I called, I called, I have called, and they put it on everybody.
Well, I'm going to give you a person to talk to you face-to-face tonight about it. She's the lady standing up in the back with the short haircut.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Marie. Thank you.
Next speaker, Mr. Clerk.
The next speaker is Donald Hatcher. Will you please come forward?
Good evening, all council persons in here tonight. I got some serious problems in Richmond. One is that Richmond was known to be one of the most segregated places in America. It is no different today. I got some real problems, where you got nine people sitting here on this city council, and you got segregated schools. You got schools that are not teaching kids what they need to know. You got all kinds of problems in this city, and I can't understand how most of the white folks in this city are so backwards that they can't see what's being done to black folks. American citizens, we are. We have served in every war it ever been for this country. We've been some of the major forces that have gotten people in the battle and got them out of battle, and put clothes on their backs so they could go out and fight. Another problem I got here in America now is, you have designated, Spanish people come from 21 countries, and tell them and tell us in America that's smart enough to understand that they have more rights than American citizens, who you call blacks or Negroes or colored or whatever else you want. But we are American citizens. How do you bring people in here from 21 different countries, make a name for them Hispanic, and tell them that they've got more rights than me? I'm a little peeved off on this matter. This is America, and we ought to have some decency in America. As much as we have served this country of America, we still supposed to be some dummies. It bothers me. It bothers me when I come before this council and I sit and look at people who have told me in this council chambers and tried to mistreat me. My hands are too dirty. My hands are clean as anybody else's. And I got a problem. I kept my mouth shut. I kept my mouth shut by going in that back and being able to go in there where the council sit down and eat. I've been coming down here over 30 some years. I didn't just come out of New York. Some of the dirtiest people I know live up there. I got a problem. I'm born and raised in this city. I've seen enough of this hatred, this prejudice, this mistreatment to have all this mess go away overnight. I don't understand it. We had a man on Broad Street here at Tallhammers Department Store that made statements against blacks who freed his people in Europe from the prison camps. He can come to America and be counted as a better citizen than me because he owned a department store. Whatever the question is, I'm tired of this foolishness in America. I'm an American citizen. I'm a little tired of foolishness. Some of you don't have a problem with being mistreated. But I'm 73 years old, and I'm tired of the foolishness. You might be white. You might be dumb as a block of wood. I've seen that in America, too. I've been around. But you ain't going to keep mistreating me or people like me who stand up. I'm coming down here and tell you to your face. I'm tired of foolishness. You've denied me out of my life throughout America. I've served this country. And that don't mean nothing either because you whites think that you can just mistreat black folks and continue to do it over and over. I'm here appealing to you to stop the foolishness. Ain't nobody your slave. We're free men, free women who have served this country in every way you can name and every war it ever been. But you keep playing the game. You sit there and you change stuff and you do what you want to. You need to do what's right. Or some of you need to walk on out the door and keep walking because you ain't an American citizen the way I see it. Thank you.
Next speaker, Mr. Clerk.
Mr. President, the next speaker is Jody M. Strange. Please come forward.
Good evening. My name is Jody Strange, and I'm president of Friends of Richmond K-9. We are a nonprofit organization that supports the K-9 unit of the Richmond Police Department. We are not a part of the Richmond Police Department, but we do support the K-9 unit. A part of our ambition is to support this K-9 unit financially. We just bought them some heated dog bowls, which we're very proud that we did that. What we can't do is buy them a new building that they desperately need. In March, we'll be voting on projects in the capital improvement plan. The Richmond Police has sent an application in, and it asks for a basic, functional building. Please know that Friends of Richmond K-9 support this application. The CIP gives these unbelievably talented men and women of K-9 an opportunity to have this home base to operate from...
You have 30 seconds. Please begin to sunrise.
So they can spend their time training and protecting, not begging for Band-Aids to hold their building together.
Ms. Strange, just so you know, that was a misstatement.
I thought time was passed quickly. I will ask for a second to find my place. All right, so let's talk about the Band-Aid that they're begging for. If you can visualize the building, 1,000 square feet, and it's in bad shape, visualize worse. And then after you've visualized worse, visualize even worse. This very important project would be funded through capital bond sales and not impact the annual budget or programs associated with the annual budget. In case you're not familiar with the value of K-9 policing, let me share a couple of facts. The nose of a properly trained canine has the ability to smell and detect things a human cannot physically detect. The deterrent factor and the speed of a properly trained patrol dog exponentially increases the success rate of apprehending dangerous and violent criminals. The K-9 unit of the Richmond Police Department trains canine and canine handlers regionally. They train Henrico, Hanover, Manassas, the Capitol, Homeland Security. We even have a trainer who's asked to come to Switzerland once a year to train globally. This K-9 unit adds significant value to our city, and all they want is a building. They don't want the Taj Mahal. They don't want a state-of-the-art building. They want a basic building that functions. A question I do have for you, Mr. President, is do you have a date on which the budget will be voted on in regards to the capital improvement?
We have an entire calendar that counts backwards from when we expect to pass the budget. I do not have that calendar in front of me tonight. I'm sorry.
Is there a place I can find that information?
Yes, there is. Best thing I would recommend you do is you talk to my liaison, Jan Girardi. She's in a houndstooth, black and white jacket, standing up right there. If you talk with her, and I know we've got a scheduled meeting in the not-too-distant future, but if you talk to her before you leave tonight, she'll get you squared away with what you're interested in.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much.
Mr. President?
Yes, ma'am.
Jody, I want to thank you for contacting me several months ago. You know that I was really, really busy, and I was so... I'm so sorry that I didn't take the time to, you know, hear you out because, you know, what was going on, the election was going on and all that. And you still stayed focused and kept calling me. And the other day, we had, what, an hour conversation? And I want to thank you for bringing this to us and also for you coming here tonight and, you know, asking us to support you because I know that your heart is in there with those animals and with the K-9 units and all that and the trainers. And thank you for coming here tonight.
Well, thank you for saying that. It's really important to me that when you do vote on something, that you have an idea and the knowledge on what you're voting on and a sense for the environment and the sense of the importance of what this... You can't protect a city until you take care of the people who protect it. So you need to... I invite you to come to the building. I would love to give you a tour. Love to give you a tour. You'll be amazed at what you see. This is just such an elite group of men and women and canines. And it saddens me to go through this building and see the needs, the needs that they don't have. So, again, thank you for your conversation, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker, Mr. Clerk.
The next speaker is Michael Spence.
Good evening, counsel. Mr. President, my name is Michael Spence. I live in Richmond's 3rd District in the Bellevue neighborhood. And this is my first time addressing the city council. And it's my pleasure to bring up a more lighthearted topic, but something still very serious. I'm here today to express my excitement for the possibility of Richmond having chickens. I know, Mr. President, as you're kind of pushing the paper through, that's getting us started with that. But it's a very exciting topic. It's something that the citizens of Richmond can do and create a better community as far as taking care of ourselves and relying on our neighbors for information and for exchange of ideas. So I'm really excited about that. And specifically hens. We're not talking about rare species here. So we're very excited about hens. So the biggest thing is about the property size, while reducing the size of property that is mandated for people to have chickens. So that really will have a huge impact for people in our community. Can I address a couple of questions for you, Mr. Samuels?
You may certainly ask, though.
Okay. When will the public be able to read the revised edition on the website? I know that an oversight was corrected recently as far as the property size.
All right, what's your next question?
My next question is, will this issue be on the ballot for February 25th?
Very good. Okay. And your third?
That's it.
That's it. Thank you so much for coming down. I will let you know that revisions will be introduced tonight. And I don't know exactly when they're scheduled to be heard. Because they're fairly substantial revisions, we'll probably send them back to Land Use and then have Land Use weigh in and then have them make a recommendation back to city council.
Okay. But they will be available on the website at some point before that meeting? Is that correct?
Yes, they should be. We can... I'll make sure that the clerk is aware of it. But usually, he does a good job of getting them up there.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all for your time.
Next speaker, Mr. Clerk.
The next speaker is Rosetta Torrance. Please come forward.
Good evening, Mr. President, City Council. I thank you for your time. It's been unexpected. I didn't expect to be here today, so I could only... My name is Rosetta Torrance, and I'm from 1818 Stockton Street. I'm our spokesperson for our Neighborhood Watch Team. And tonight, I'm a spokesperson for even the wider... Members of our wider Richmond community because we have a petition asking that our police chief, Norwood, remain here in the city of Richmond. There are so many crazy things going on. All kinds of conversation as I went out and me and other members of our team to collect signatures for our petition. No one understands what's going on. And maybe council could help us find out what's going on. Maybe council could help us bring our mayor and our chief together with some reconciliation because they are both excellent people, and we need them both. And people at the grassroots level, I think our mayor would be very upset if he knew that people are hearing or thinking that he has something to do with pushing the police chief out. Now, that's a lot of negative, and I didn't come here for that. I came to basically just read our petition. But I believe, I do not believe our mayor is like that. We love the mayor, too. And we have great respect for him. And we just want them to come together and just let us know what's going on. Why is our police chief leaving? Some are saying he's going for more money. Anyone who knows Police Chief Norwood knows that he's not a man that's just chasing money. He's altruistic. He came into our community, Blackwell, which is one of the worst in terms of when, before he got here, we had so much crime. It was incredible. He joined us together. Between him and our councilwoman, Reva Trammell, we have come together, and we have the greatest meetings. We have the best police team. In fact, if you come into any of our meetings, it's almost like a pep rally. We shout and cheer for the police officers. And this is all a part of Chief Norwood coming in there, coming there face to face with us, talking to us, listening to our problems, hearing them and finding panaceas for them right there on the spot sometimes, always coming back. I don't think he came in... I've been here for over 25 years, and I've seen a lot of good police chiefs. We had very good police chiefs. But he is the best. And he didn't... I don't think, I don't think that he came... You know, he didn't have to come down to our meetings, but he always came. And he gave us the inspiration, the confidence to fight and not be hiding and being afraid to, you know, even call the police or to think that the police don't care about us. They do care about us, and so does Chief Norwood. And we don't want him to leave. In fact, we're begging him to stay. That's how much we love him, and we care about him. And we know we are at peace. I'm a senior citizen. I'm 64. I'm the youngest of the seniors in my community. The other ones were petrified, scared to death, before this man came in here helping us. My time is up. May I please just submit? And I apologize because I didn't read the petition, but you understand what we would like. I have to submit here... And may I please submit this, Mr. President, to our councilwoman, who will make sure all of you get copies? This is over 200 signatures of members of the community, Richmond community citizens, who would like for us to keep Chief Norwood here. And we would like for you guys to help us. Please help us reconcile whatever the problems are. We love the chief and the mayor. And we would like this settled, and we would like our chief to stay here. Thank you for your time, and I'm sorry for the overtime.
Thank you very much.
President, Rosetta. She just started these petitions, I think, what, Thursday, when she had heard that the chief was maybe not going to be here any longer? And so many people have been calling me and begging.
All over the city.
What can we do to help?
They want more.
How can we sign these petitions? They're asking, what is broken? What's broken? What has this chief not done for our city? What has he not done? He is loved by everybody.
He is.
Our children, our seniors, the business people, the community leaders, faith base. I mean, why? We don't have an answer. Is it because Governor Wilder bought him here? Doesn't matter who bought this chief here. The chief has done what we have asked him to do. He has worked with this council.
Made us...
He has worked with us. The poorest of the poor, he has been there.
He has.
Dancing with them, holding them, hugging them, listening to them cry at these meetings. It has even been, this is one of the 8th district meetings, it has been put in Spanish. This chief, this chief, at one of our 8th district meetings last year, when his hands were not tied and he could come out and listen to us and help us. You know, it's not, it's not our chief. Our chief was just on Channel 6 last Thursday night saying to Mark Humberg, he loves our city. He loves our city.
He does.
This is his home. He's made this his home.
And he cares for us.
Cares. He cares deeply for us. And as I have said, it's not broken. Leave him alone. Let him do his job. And let Mr. Mayor run City Hall like he's supposed to, not run the chief's, not do the chief's job or run that police department. And we're asking him to stay. When you got the surrounding county that has said in the newspaper, this chief has done a lot to bring the surrounding counties together. This chief has put us on national news. People in other cities has asked, what has Richmond, Virginia done? How did they get crime rates so low? Why, how? All of us coming together with this police chief.
Yes.
Community policing, his command staff knowing what he wants of them. And he comes in and visits us.
At this point, we can't really do back and forth. If Ms. Trammell wanted to respond to your comments, I don't have an objection to that, but we can't have a running dialogue on it right now.
Mr. President, she started this. She, not myself. Yes, I have been hollering and screaming because I know that back in the day, when we could not even get along with the chief or with those officers, when we had 160 homicides in the city of Richmond, people were sleeping in the bathtubs. People were running from gunshots. Their houses, their homes being shot up. Maybe some of you don't know that because you probably don't live in the poorest of the poorest of the neighborhood or represent some of the poorest of the poorest like I have in 1998 when it was Blackwell and Oak Grove and when people were afraid to even come out and talk to the police. Jefferson Davis, Broad Rock, Hall Street. We've changed that. Not by ourselves, but with this police chief. Not by ourselves, but with this Police Chief. And I'll tell you one thing, if he leaves, this will be our biggest loss, and it's going to be whoever gets him, it's going to be their biggest gain.
Absolutely.
Because he's the best of the best. Our chief is the best of the best. He has put Richmond, Virginia in the spotlight.
Thank you very much.
And thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Rosetta. Thank you for doing all of this.
Are there other speakers, Mr. Clerk?
Yes, Mr. President, Melbert Gibbs had signed up, but she called and has withdrawn her request. With that being said, that, that concludes the speakers list for tonight.
Very good. Let's please move to the consent agenda.
Mr. President, before we move to the consent agenda.
Yes, sir.
We have two papers that we would like to have a motion to amend.
Very good.
First is item number two, which is ordinance number 2012-192. That's to amend the city code by adding a new section concerning a business license incentive program for qualified businesses for the purpose of exempting new businesses that locate within the city from paying business, professional, and occupational license taxes for a period not to exceed two years. And the proposed amendment to that paper is as follows. Page four, line 12, after the word effect, delete the phrase upon adoption and insert the phrase beginning July 1, 2013. I will need a motion to accept the amendment to that paper as presented and to have that paper continued until Monday, February the 11th. Ms. Graziano, will you make that motion?
So moved.
Council is voting on Ms. Graziano's motion to accept the amendment to item number two, ordinance number 2012-192 as presented. Mr. Bilal?
Aye.
Ms. Graziano?
Aye.
Ms. Mosby?
Aye.
Mr. Agelasto?
Aye.
Mr. Hilbert?
Aye.
Ms. Trammell?
Aye.
Ms. Newbill?
Aye.
President Samuels?
Aye.
That amendment has been adopted, and that paper will be before you again on Monday, February the 11th. Next, we have item number eight, which is ordinance number 2013-1. That's to authorize a chief administrative officer to execute a lease between Catawba Ventures Incorporated as Lee Sore and the city of Richmond as Lee See for the purpose of providing a temporary site for the East End Library at 3001 Nine Mile Road, Unit C, for a period of six months, begin in February 1, 2013. The proposed amendment to that paper is as follows. Page one, line five, after the word lease, insert the phrase as amended. Page one, line seven, after the letter C, insert the phrase and Unit D. Page one, line 14, after the word lease, insert the phrase as amended. Page one, line 16, after the letter C, insert the phrase and Unit D. Page one, line 17, after the word lease, insert the phrase as amended. Page one, line 19, after the section number two, delete the text that the chief administrative officer for and on behalf of the city of Richmond be and is hereby authorized to execute such other documents as may be necessary to effecuate the purpose of the lease, provided that such other documents must be first, must be approved as to form by the city attorney, section three. I will need a motion to accept the proposed amendment as presented. Mr. Agelasto, will you make that motion?
So moved.
Council is voting on Councilman Agelasto's motion to accept the amendment to item number eight, ordinance number 2013-1 as presented. Mr. Bilal?
Aye.
Ms. Graziano?
Aye.
Ms. Mosby?
Aye.
Mr. Agelasto?
Aye.
Mr. Hilbert?
Aye.
Ms. Trammell?
Aye.
Ms. Newbill?
Aye.
President Samuels?
Aye.
That amendment has been adopted, and that paper will be before you again on Monday, February the 11th.
Thank you very much. Mr. Clerk, at this point, may we please have the consent agenda?
Mr. President, the consent agenda for this evening is as follows. Item three, ordinance number 2013-200, to authorize a special use of 407 South Cherry Street and 811 Albemel Street for the purpose of establishing a single-family dwelling lot and a lot to be used for surface parking accessory for the multifamily use. Item six, ordinance number 2012-231, to authorize, I mean, to amend ordinance which established an Affordable Housing Trust Fund Advisory Board for the purpose of adding a member of City Council as a non-voting chairman of the board. Item nine, ordinance number 2013-6, to accept $25,000 from the Virginia Department of Conservation and Recreation for the purpose of developing a stormwater management program that comply with the new Virginia Stormwater Management Regulation and inform the community about the need for the regulation. Item 10, ordinance number 2013-7, to accept $6,350,000 from the Virginia Department of Transportation for the purpose of appropriating funding received from the Virginia Department of Transportation's fiscal year 2013 Revenue Sharing Program for various projects. Item 12, resolution number 2013-R9, to approve the plan of financing for the Capital Region Airport Commission for the purpose of financing or refinancing expansion, improvement, and extension at the Richmond International Air, Airport. Item 13, resolution number 2013-R10, to approve $250 from the Council District Fund for the sixth district to make a donation to Camp Divas Date with Dad Dinner and Dance. Item 14, resolution number 2013-R11, to approve $500 from Council, from the Council District Fund for the third district to make a donation to Camp Divas Date with Dad Dinner and Dance. Item 15, resolution number 2013-R12, to approve $1,590 from the Council District Fund for the sixth district to pay Fifth Baptist, Fifth Street Baptist Church for providing catering for the sixth district awards ceremony. Item 16, resolution number 2013-R46, to approve $500 from the Council District Funds for the second district to make a donation to Camp Divas Date with Dad Dinner and Dance. Mr. President, that concludes the consent agenda items.
Very good. Thank you very much. Are there any members of the public that wish to speak in favor of any of these papers?
Good evening, Mr. President, council members. I'm Charles Summers, speaking to item number six in the consent agenda. I'm the pastor of the First Presbyterian Church here in Richmond and the co-president of RISK, Richmonders Involved to Strengthen Our Community, a grassroots organization. Some of our members are here this evening. Thank you. RISK is an interfaith grassroots organization representing a dozen congregations across Richmond. We work together across lines of race, class, income, and neighborhood in order to help promote greater equality and justice in our community. I stand to speak tonight with reference to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund and the motion before you in item number six. For two years, our group has urged City Council members and the mayor to make the Affordable Housing Trust Fund a reality and not just good intentions on paper. 700 other cities across our nation have such a fund to help promote mixed-income housing, to help promote greater opportunity for all citizens to have a decent and safe place to live. We've asked that one-third of the funds be targeted to help the poorest citizens in our city. Many of the issues addressed in the Anti-Poverty Commission Report are helped by improving the housing opportunities for all citizens. The trust fund leverages private investment to do just that. Councilwoman Robertson has put forward a motion to add a non-voting seat to the advisory council. You have discussed it and added it to your consent agenda, which tells us you think it's a good idea. We want to see the Affordable Housing Trust Fund move forward, so if this helps, that is great. We look forward to seeing the mayor complete his list of nominees to the advisory council. We especially look forward to seeing the trust fund receive a place in the budget with a dedicated income stream. We realize there are more good things to do than there is money to go around. You have the difficult task of allocating scarce resources to benefit our community. We urge you again tonight to move forward on the Affordable Housing Trust Fund as an important step in the right direction. Thank you.
Thank you very much. For those involved in RISK, are there any city residents who stood when the RISK members stood? If they would stand again, please. Thank you. Don't want to make anybody feel excluded, but I think it's important for us to know that this is not just congregation members, but constituents as well. Thank you very much. The next speaker in favor of any of these papers, please?
Good evening, President Samuels and honorable members of council. I'm Todd Woodson. I'm here representing the Oregon Hill Neighborhood Association regarding ordinance number 2012-200, the Victory Rug Building, uh, uh, SUP that's before you today. It is with extreme reservation that we do support this. Uh, our Neighborhood Association made a gentleman's agreement over a month ago with the applicant, and, uh, despite several requests, we didn't get that written agreement until yesterday afternoon, which made it pretty much a fait accompli. We, we didn't have a chance to discuss it, research it, or anything else, and it was a departure from our gentleman's agreement. You know, Oscar Wilde one time said that some people know the price of everything and the value of nothing. Um, I've had to ask myself during this long pathway to crafting this SUP, is a few crumbs of extra profit really worth compromising your integrity? Uh, the applicant has effectively destroyed any bond of trust that could have been established with our neighborhood by the many twisting turns and curveballs and last-minute, uh, uh, ways that, uh, that, that this, uh, this SUP has come about. Um, that being said, the Oregon Hill Neighborhood would like to extend our sincerest gratitude to Richmond's planning staff, who we found to be, uh, their competence, their patience, uh, and their fairness has been exemplary, and we'd like to extend our, our very sincerest gratitude. We'd also like to extend, uh, the highest gratitude to, uh, Honorable Councilman Agelasto, whose consummate intelligence and work ethic is a very welcome, refreshing breeze to his constituents, and we welcome you, sir. And in closing, uh, like I said before, we do support going through with this, uh, but like the James River Hawk that, uh, that graces our environs, we will be watching every move and making sure that every i is dotted, every t is crossed, because we don't trust what's, uh, what's happened in the past, and, uh, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Woodson. Anybody else speak in favor of any of these papers? Are there those here to speak in opposition to any of these papers? Uh, yes, please, sir, come on down.
I'm Gabe London. I'm, uh, with the applicant, and, um, I just, um, wanted to say I'm here if anybody has any questions. Uh, I, this has been a long, arduous set of negotiations. I am dumbfounded at the description of the negotiations that I just heard. I just, I, I don't, I certainly this isn't the, uh, the place to argue with that or discuss that, but, um, we have made a lot of concessions, and I think we'll have a wonderful project. Um, so just that said, is there anything, would any of the council members like to ask me anything?
Seeing none.
All right. Very good. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. Seeing no one else in favor or opposition to any of these papers, I'll bring it back to council for discussion. Seeing none, call the question, Mr. Clerk? Ms. Clerk, sorry?
Um, council is voting on the consent agenda items 3, 6, 9, 10, 12 through 16. Mr. Bilal?
Aye.
Ms. Graziano?
Aye.
Ms. Mosby?
Aye.
Mr. Agelasco?
Aye.
Mr. Hilbert?
Aye.
Ms. Trammell?
Aye.
Ms. Newbill?
Aye.
President Samuel?
Aye.
Those items has been adopted.
Wonderful. Thank you. I believe we're at a point where we need to approve some minutes.
The minutes for approval today is, um, the formal meeting on Monday, December 10th, 6:00 PM. I'm sorry. The, the informal for, um, this, for January 14th and the formal for January 14th, and I need a motion to approve those minutes as read. Um, Ms. Newbill, can you make that motion, please?
Absolutely, Madam Clark. So moved.
So we're voting on Ms. Newbill's motion to accept the minutes as read. Mr. Bilal?
Aye.
Ms. Graziano?
Aye.
Ms. Mosby?
Aye.
Ms. Agelasco?
Aye.
Mr. Hilbert?
Aye.
Ms. Trammell?
Aye.
Ms. Newbill?
Aye.
President Samuel?
Aye.
Those minutes has been adopted.
Thank you. No other minutes to be adopted tonight? Wonderful. At this point, we'll move forward then to reports and announcements of the members of council. Dr. Newbill?
Thank you, Mr. President. I am going to punt to my colleague, Mr. Agelasto, first, and, uh, we're going to share an announcement, and then we'll come back.
Very good.
Thank you. Uh, I'm going to make some general announcements, and then I'll, I'll go back to Councilwoman Newbill. Um, we've got some Neighborhood Association meetings that are coming up, and I really encourage fifth district residents to get involved in your community, uh, get involved with your neighbors. Uh, February the 4th, the Hall Street Midlothian Civic Association meets at 6:30 PM at Quantanilla Church at 3600 McRand Street. February 5th, the Randolph Community Group is meeting at 6:00 PM at the Randolph Community Center. Also on February the 5th, the Uptown Association meets at 6:00 PM at the Alliance Group, 2201 West Main Street. February 6th, the Bird Park Civic League is meeting at 6:00 PM at the Roundhouse, followed at 7:00 PM also at the Roundhouse of the Fifth District Community Action Team. On February the 6th at 6:00 PM, I will be co-hosting a meeting for all fifth district residents at the Virginia War Memorial. Uh, this will be to discuss the upcoming budget and citizen priorities. I will be joined by our chief administrative officer, Byron Marshall, and so I invite everybody to come. Uh, we will be doing some interactive engagement with you, uh, just like other districts have done. So again, that's February the 6th at 6:00 PM, the Virginia War Memorial. And finally, at our next council meeting on February the 11th, I'm very pleased to announce that we will be, uh, giving a community service award to an artist, uh, whose name is Corey Harris. He's a musician, and this week, on January 31st, he's going to be releasing an album called Fulton Blues, in which he's telling the history of our Fulton community. Uh, and I've known about Corey for quite a long time. He's a remarkable musician, internationally renowned, a recipient of the MacArthur Genius Award, uh, and with that, I will pass on to my colleague Cynthia Newbill.
Just simply like to thank my colleague, Mr. Parker Agelasto. Um, I did not, but certainly now am very appreciative of the artist, Mr. Corey Harris. Uh, this is an extraordinary vocalist and guitarist, and as Parker has indicated, will be here on February 11th. Um, and when Parker actually, I'm taking a little longer, Mr. President, just little history here, um, when Parker told me about, uh, Mr. Harris and the fact that he just, his album to be released is about Fulton, and it's entitled Fulton Blues, I said, well, okay, is that my Fulton in the East End? And indeed, it is. Uh, he really does capture and retell the history of the East End community's Greater Fulton community. And so then, after much conversation, uh, Mr. Harris has also agreed, uh, that while he's here, once he receives recognition from this body, he has agreed to, uh, hold a benefit concert for the Greater Fulton Memorial Park that citizens in that community have been working on diligently for the last two years. The concert will be held at our historic Bird Theater, so we're absolutely excited for our citizens to know about that and to come down and be a part of that recognition, and then to go over to the Bird Theater to be a part of that concert. It will be a benefit concert for, uh, the Greater Fulton, uh, Memorial Park, and, uh, we are absolutely excited that Mr. Harris has written, uh, this, this album, uh, Fulton Blues, about our community. Our community will be on the world map. He is a renowned vocalist and guitarist who has performed throughout the world, and we're just, uh, very excited and very appreciative of his taking his time and, uh, putting his, uh, extraordinary gift at the disposal of our community and our city, and so I just, uh, say thank you, uh, to him and look forward to meeting him, and look forward to everyone coming out. Uh, 1,300 of our nearest and dearest friends can fill in the Bird Theater for this benefit concert, so we're. So we're excited to have you come out for that event. So again, Parker, thank you so very much. And, Mr. President, thank you for allowing this unusual but joint announcement, as it has truly been a team effort. And I'm very appreciative, certainly on behalf of Greater Fulton, but on behalf of our city, this is a renowned worldwide artist. And now I just have one last announcement. Just wanted to announce that my district meeting has been rescheduled. It will be held Thursday, January 31st at 6:30 PM at the East District Center, located at 701 North 25th Street. We will provide updates in terms of the work on our corridor, our strategic work plan over the last three years, and as we look prospectively, what are some of the priorities. We'll also have an opportunity to have citizens weigh in in terms of budget priorities through the interactive technology that the administration has made available, so we can really capture and I can really hear what the priorities are for the new year. And so look forward to you coming out, again, Thursday, January 31st, 6:30 PM at the East District Center. Thank you so much. And, Mr. President, thank you for your indulgence. And, Mr. Parker, thank you so very much again.
Always a pleasure. Thank you, Dr. Newbill and Councilman Agelasto. Ms. Trammell?
Thank you, Mr. President. Last Thursday night, January 24th, we had our meeting at the Satellite, and Mr. Marshall was there with his staff to present the budget to us and to talk to us about some of the issues that we're having, like with streets and drainage and sidewalks and things like that. And we really appreciate Mr. Marshall for taking the time to come out again, because I know he was out in December, and then he came back in January to address the citizens about needs that we're talking about in our 8th District. So I just want to thank Mr. Marshall and his staff. Our next meeting will—we will not have another meeting until April 18th. Again, there will not be a meeting in February or March. Our next 8th District meeting will be on a Thursday, April 18th, at 6:00 PM at the Our public safety meeting is tomorrow night. Public safety meeting is tomorrow night, Tuesday, January 29th, at 4:30 PM at the Police Academy. And we're going to have the police and the fire, and we're going to talk about their pay raises, we're going to talk about their medical, health insurance, career development, and the retirees. So we're asking everyone to come out, again, tomorrow night at 4:30, and we'll be there until whenever. Everyone's going to get an opportunity to speak. This council needs to know what is on the minds of our police officers and our firefighters. So please come out there, and I hope that my colleagues will join me tomorrow night at 4:30 at the Police Academy. And I don't have the address. It's West Graham Road?
Yeah.
Thank you.
1202.
1202 West Graham Road. Also, oh, this right here, I don't know if it's been addressed by my colleagues or by Mr. Mayor, but I think it's pretty, pretty bad. This has been going on since last year, where the Free Press, their newspaper boxes are being vandalized, destroyed. The newspapers are being taken out of these boxes and thrown all over the place. I've seen them even on Jefferson Davis, I've seen them on Hull Street, with people in downtown, where people are just going in there, writing things on them, busting the front out. It's just, you know, it's unthinkable somebody would do this. I mean, to any newspaper, the Free Press, The Voice, The Times, Dispatch, Style Weekly, anyone, The Fender. It's not—this is not—not right. And for it not to even be addressed by—well, I'm going to ask for it to be addressed at my next public safety meeting, and I hope that Mr. Boone will come before us and also let us know if there's been any arrests, if anything's been made, any progress to find out who's doing this, who's destroying these boxes, because they cost money. And not only that, when you go and see the papers all over the streets and everything, you're not supposed to be doing that. But anyway, at my next public safety meeting, I would ask Mr. Ray Boone to please be there and maybe our chief, to see if there's been any arrests and see if there's any updates on this. This right here is your free smoke alarm. It is free in the city right now. If you call 646-1526, that's 646-1526, these firefighters will come to your house, they will install the smoke alarm for you for free. Don't cost you a dime, not yet. Also, if it needs a battery, they'll put the battery in, they won't leave it with you, they will do it themselves. So please, please, contact the firefighters and let them come there and check your smoke alarms. Smoke alarms do save your lives, and they save your homes, and they save your pets and all. So again, and also, if you want to, you can go to your nearest firefighter, to the fire station, and set up appointment for them to come to your house and inspect it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Trammell. Mr. Hilbert?
Thank you, Mr. Samuel, Mr. President. I want to echo Ms. Trammell's remarks relative to these vandalizing the Free Press boxes. This is—when you have an attack on the press, and that's what this is, it's an attack on us all. And I hope everyone will take this very seriously. The First Amendment is extremely precious to all of us, and if you agree or disagree with someone, that's not relevant. I think we all need to stand up for someone's right to express themselves. The Health—excuse me—the Education and Human Services Committee met on January 16th, and I'd like to welcome our two new members of the committee, Ms. Mosby and Mr. Agelasto. I think we had good discussion, and I appreciate their input. We heard a presentation from Dr. Jack Lanier from the Richmond Behavioral Health Authority as to the various initiatives of the authority. We also heard from Kelly Kinghorn, the Executive Director of Homeward, that Homeward is the continuum of care for the Richmond metropolitan area, providing homeless services, or, excuse me, they are the head of the—they are the continuum that assists these organizations. They don't provide direct services themselves. We heard an update on the computer resources. If you'll recall, last year, a number of Richmond Public School students approached council and let us know that their access to computers was limited, that there was an hour limit at the libraries and that they needed more access. And so we've tried to get some information out to the community to see how we can provide computers or at least access to the Internet. And what we were presented was a program by Comcast. Mr. Kim Dai came before us and let us know that there is a smaller computer that can be purchased for $149 for students that are on the Free and Reduced Lunch Program. And we received some estimates as to what that cost would be. This is also contingent upon someone signing up for basic Internet service at $9.99 a month. And so we're doing a little bit more study to find out where the hotspots are in the city, trying to get access so that—and this is, again, we talked earlier about transportation. We want to make sure that these hotspots, libraries, or other city facilities, or even privately owned facilities, are within walkable distance of most of these students, so that if this service should lapse at home, they'd still have access to the Internet reasonably. And so we appreciate these students' input, and that's the way that we get things done, is to let us know about it, and we're attempting to address that critical issue. The next Education and Human Services meeting is February 20th, and that's the third Wednesday in February at 5:00 here at City Hall. Last Wednesday, the 3rd District meeting was held at Pine Camp. We met the—excuse me, there was presentations from the officers in charge of Sectors 411 and 412, Lieutenant Louis Mills and Lieutenant Chris Gleason, respectively. And they took a number of questions from the audience, and I was very impressed they were engaged in wanting everyone to be aware of what they are doing, as well as let them know what's going on. And I really appreciate the lady coming down earlier and talking about the difference that they've made in our city. And I, again, want to emphasize that this is not city council down here creating new positions on the police force and the police going out and doing their job. We need the involvement of the city, excuse me, the citizens, or this just isn't going to work out. I'd remind everyone to not leave valuables in your car. They are—you're creating time away from enforcing our other laws and responding to your neighborhood by the police having to come out and do a report on your vehicle break-in. So let's take some responsibility and try and do what we can to prevent crime and keep our officers out there doing what they do best. We also heard—well, briefly, we addressed the Redskins Training Camp and how that is moving along. I did want to remind everyone, or do want to remind everyone, that you can get on the 3rd District email list by calling Lisa Townes at 646-6055, or emailing her at lisa.towns, D-O-W-N-E-S, at richmondgov.com. And please be assured that your email information will be kept confidential. Our next meeting will be March 27th, again, the fourth Wednesday, 6:00, Pine Camp, 4901 Old Brook Road, next to Henderson Middle School. We're starting a series called Meet Your City Council, and we—the first guest is President Charles Samuel, and we appreciate you coming. And an invitation will be extended to each council member, but we did want to start with the President and Vice President, respectively. So thank you all, and we'll be getting an invitation to each member of council in the future. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Mr. Agelasto, was there anything you wanted to add from earlier?
I think I went through it rather quickly, so I'm fine. Thank you.
Very good. Ms. Mosby?
I have had an opportunity to talk to many of the 9th District constituents who have addressed concerns, and I just want them to rest assured that I am working diligently to those concerns. Those of you that I have not had an opportunity to connect with, I want to provide my email address, which is Michelle.Mosby@RichmondGov.com. I would love for you to shoot me an email so that I can begin a register with your email address, so that we can correspond with each other, and I can let you know when we're having our meetings and everything else that's going on in the district. If you by any chance do not have email, we can—I can be reached at the 804-646-2779. I welcome your correspondences. We have two upcoming events that need to be addressed. On February 7th at 6:00 PM, the 9th District will hold a budget meeting with Byron Marshall, the mayor, CAO. And we will be discussing the budget specifics, and he's there to hear your concerns of the district. And that's at the ESH Green, 1745 Catalina Drive. Please come out and voice your concerns. I need you not to meet me there, I need you to beat me there, y'all. We can't help you if we don't know what your concerns are. If you're at home, we can't help. So I need you to come to Green, and let them do their job in trying to find out what we need. Also, on February 21st, we will have our first district meeting, and that will be at J.L. Francis Elementary. And that's at 5146 Need Road, and that's from 6:00 to 8:00. We're going to discuss a variety of topics, from crime and Neighborhood Watch to community cleanup. Remember, this is the time now for us to act. I'm asking you all to help me help you. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Mosby. Ms. Graziano?
Thank you, Mr. President. I've got a couple of things. Tomorrow night is my 4th district meeting at St. Luke's at 7:00. We'll be discussing—the police will be there with a report, Public Works will be there. We're going to have some budget discussion. And I would just like to say to the residents of the 4th District, but the residents throughout the city, all these meetings are open to anyone in the city. If you have not attended a budget meeting, you need to go to it. Look on the website, on the city website, you'll find out when and where the remaining meetings are. As my—as Councilwoman Mosby said, if you're not there, you can't be heard. So if you have not gone to a budget meeting, go on the website, see where they are, when they are, or call your councilperson, and go to those budget meetings and have your voice be heard. And one other thing I just wanted to bring up, it happened in my district, but I'm sure that—I know it was not a one-time occurrence. We had a person in—actually, in my neighborhood, some people came out and painted lines on the street and on her driveway. A week later, they came back and said they were the Verizon people, and they had come to check our service. Indeed, her service was not what they wanted to check, they wanted to check what she owned, and they found some things they liked and took them. So my—all I'm saying is, I know that this scam is going on, and if you—if somebody knocks at your door, and they say they're from Verizon, or Comcast, or whatever, if you haven't called them, or they don't have identification, do not let them in your house. That's my point. Thanks.
Good advice. Thank you, Ms. Graziano. Mr. Bliles?
Two meetings of note that echo—I'd like to echo what Ms. Graziano said about showing up and making your voice heard for the budget. There is a meeting Saturday, February 2nd at 10:00 AM, hosted by Glenn Sturdivant, 1st District School Board Representative, to discuss the school budget at the West End Library on Patterson Avenue. And there will be a meeting Tuesday, February 5th, with Byron Marshall and myself and the mayor's staff about the city budget. That will be held at 6:00 PM. It's currently scheduled for Albert Hill Middle School on Patterson Avenue. I'm trying to get that changed to Thomas Jefferson, because there's another community meeting there that—later that night. So please check the website, my website, for the exact location. Right now, it's scheduled for Albert Hill, and it will take place there unless we are able to change it. My website is johnbliles.com, where you can sign up for email communications and alerts, Facebook, Twitter, all that good stuff. And on a personal note, I'm really excited about the Corey Harris concert and the award on February 11th. I've seen Corey several times, he was at the Folk Festival a few years ago. And seeing as that benefit concert is also the night of the next city council meeting, I'd like to make a motion to move the meeting to the Bird Theater on February 11th.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Bliles. I have a few announcements of my own. Tomorrow night is, of course, the State of the City address by Mayor Jones. That's at 6:30 PM at Richmond Center Stage. If you require any special accommodations, you can dial 646-7970, so that folks are aware of that and can prepare that for you. The next night, Wednesday, January 30th, the mayor and I will be at the Science Museum of Virginia, which is 2,500 West Broad Street, from 6:00 to 8:00 PM, to have a discussion with our communities about the upcoming budget. I encourage all residents of the 2nd District to come out. This is a great opportunity for your voices to be heard. It is difficult to budget effectively for our constituents when we don't hear from our constituents about what they want. And I think I echo the voice of almost every other councilperson tonight when I say, please come out for this. This is a wonderful opportunity for the public to be engaged in a meaningful way in crafting where our tax dollars are spent in the next year. On January 22nd, the superintendent—well, excuse me. On February 2nd, the 1st and 2nd School Board Representatives will be hosting a school budget town hall meeting at the West End Library, which is 5,420 Patterson Avenue. It's scheduled to go from 10:00 AM to 12:00 noon. On January 22nd, the superintendent introduced a draft budget, and it looks like the schools are facing another $12 million shortfall this year. The constituents' input is incredibly necessary to let us know and to let our School Board Representatives know where your priorities are, so please come out to these important, vital, community meetings. And lastly, on Tuesday, February 1st, I'll be back at the Science Museum for a discussion of trees in the planned park for the west end of the Redskins site on West Lee Street. So the area just to the west of where the practice fields are is going to be a park, and we want to have as much public input as possible about this. One of the most assured ways to get that is to host a meeting where people come out specifically to discuss what they'd like to see in this park. And that's Tuesday, February 5th, at the Science Museum of Virginia, 2,500 West Broad Street, from 5:30 to 7:00 PM. I want to thank everybody for coming out tonight. I want to thank everybody for coming out tonight. Is there any other business? Seeing none, I guess we will have an introduction of papers.
Mr. President, new legislation for this evening is as follows. Ordinance Number 2013-12 to amend the city code by adding a new section 102-246 and to amend the city code, Section 102-243 concerning parking violations and penalties for noncompliance with certain parking requirements, both for the purpose of requiring that the curbside wheels of vehicles parked on streets parallel to a curb shall be no more than 12 inches from such curb and imposing a fine for violation of such requirements. Council's Public Safety Standing Committee, January 29th. Council's public hearing date, February 11th. Ordinance Number 2013-13 to authorize special use of 106, no, 1006, 1008, 1101104 Libby Avenue for the purpose of permitting a tourist home with up to 16 guest rooms upon certain terms and conditions. Council's Planning Commission, February 19th. Council's public hearing date, February 25th. Ordinance Number 2013-14 to authorize a chief administrative officer to convey site development easements, including but not limited to easements for egress, ingress/egress utilities, cable, telecommunications, stormwater management, and other similar conveniences across the public property located at 1701 Fairfield Way for the purpose of the construction of the Richmond City Justice Center. Council's Land Use, Housing and Transportation Standing Committee, February 19th. Council's public hearing date, February 25th. Ordinance Number 2013-15 to amend the city code by adding a new article and to amend Chapter 98, Article 3 of the city code by adding therein a new section numbered 98 through 99, both for the purpose of establishing a derelict building program in accordance with Virginia Code. Council's Land Use, Housing and Transportation Standing Committee, February 19th. Council's public hearing date, February 25th. Ordinance Number 2013-16 to authorize a chief administrative officer to execute a memorandum of understanding between the city and the Virginia Department of Motor Vehicles for the purpose of allowing the Virginia Department of Motor Vehicles to issue special hauling permits on behalf of the city in accordance with the Virginia Code, Section 46.2-1139. Council's Finance and Economic Development Standing Committee, February 21st. Council's public hearing date, February 25th. Ordinance Number 2013-17 to amend the city code, Section 10 through 88, to amend, and to amend Chapter 10, Article 2 of the city code by adding a new Division 4, and to amend Appendix A of the city code by adding the new fee for Section 10 through 95 for the purpose of establishing regulations for the keeping, placement, and maintenance of chickens in the city. Council's Land Use, Housing and Transportation Standing Committee, February 19th. Council's public hearing date, February 25th. Ordinance Number 2013-18 to authorize a chief administrative officer to accept $135,185 from the United States Department of Homeland Security and to appropriate the increase to the FY 1213 Special Fund Budget for the purpose of providing, for the purpose, for the purchase of computer hardware and software to increase critical information sharing and collaboration between the city and other entities at the port of Richmond and generally within the city of Richmond. Council's Public Safety Standing Committee, January 29th. Council's public hearing date, February 11th. Ordinance Number 2013-19 to amend Ordinance 2012-188-203 for the purpose of temporarily extending the deadline for the completion of the property tax exemption by Designation Committee's review of applications for tax exemption by designation and the deadline by which ordinances exempting properties from taxation must be introduced beyond the deadline set forth in the city code, Section 98-248. Council's Public Safety Standing Committee, January 29th. Council's public hearing date, February 11th. Resolution Number 2013-R47 to reverse the decision of the Commission of Architectural Review, which denied a certificate of appropriateness for vinyl replacement windows on a home located at 2916 Monument Avenue. Council's Land Use, Housing and Transportation Standing Committee meeting, February 19th. Council's public hearing date, February 25th. And Resolution Number 2013-R48 to declare a public necessity to amend the city code and to initiate an amendment to the city zoning ordinance to include the raising or keeping of no more than four female chickens as a permitted accessory use. Council's Land Use, Housing and Transportation Standing Committee, February 19th. Council's public hearing date, February 25th. Mr. President, those are all of the new papers for this evening.
Thank you very much. Unless there's anything else, this meeting is adjourned. Good night. Go straight home.
And two hours and 20 minutes. We started right on the dot at 6:00 tonight with a call to order. All members present, except for Vice President Robertson, who is ill, and I hope she's doing better, and she'll be back with us at our next meeting. We got to the appointments and reappointments, and that took only a lot less time than we thought it was going to. It only took about 12 minutes. Then we got the awards and presentations, and then a special presentation on the mayor's Anti-Poverty Commission, followed by the one paper that we thought was going to take some time, and it didn't take a lot of time, but it did take some. This is concerning the real estate property tax exemptions for nonprofit organizations. The amendment that was in there was going to put off the deadline. The amendment failed unanimously, and so, the original paper then came back, and that passed by an 8-0 vote. The deadline is February 15th now, it was pushing it back, I believe, till March. It got to be very confusing because there were so many numbers being tossed back and forth. But anyhow, the amendment failed, the original paper was passed. Then we got to the agenda review and amendments, followed by the citizens' comment period, and then amendments on two additional papers. Then we got to the consent agenda, that only took 13 minutes before that was unanimously approved. Reports from council members, introduction of papers, and at 20 minutes past 8:00 here on a Monday night, we are adjourned for another two weeks. We'll be back again on the 11th of February, and we look forward to seeing you at that time. And so, for, until then, for gavel to gavel, I'm Dick Harmon saying good night.
Your work is done.
Say what?
Your work is done.
My work is done, yes.
Mine's just started.